Please lead us in the prayer, Commissioner McCampl to pledge.
I pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the beauty of it. We know that you are with us and we pray for peace in these uneasy times, Lord. Thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace. Help us all to exchange hate with love. We ask for a hedge of protection around this county and we pray for clear minds and ask that decision made here today will be made to honor you. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thank you. Well, again, I'd like to welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. First item is citizens' comments, and we do not, we have not had any presented this morning. So we will move on to item one, which is consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on June 16, 2020. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Judge, I have one question.
Okay.
About two items. In the deal where it says motion made by Commissioner Cheney and seconded by Thomas on a step three hire for Juvenile, should that say something about what position it was?
We'd have to look at what the backup was in the packet, I believe.
Well, that's what I was saying is to be more clarified if somebody grabbed this.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that step three could, all right, let's just go down to the next one. A step five hire could be, which position is that?
Given that there are, specifically in the Treasurers' Office, there are two classifications of employees, and it does not adequately reflect...
The position that we were talking about.
The position that we were talking about. Valid point. It's something that, that should be addressed, actually. It would save on later confusion when individuals are researching. Are there any others, any other questions to this? Might I suggest that we pass over the minutes so that we may be able to do the research, to have it adequately reflect the actions of the court?
I mean, I know what our intentions were.
Mm-hmm.
But step three could be in, say, three different categories or four different categories.
Possibly. Depending on the department, you are correct. All right, can we get a motion to table the minutes?
I make a motion to table the minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, seconded by Commissioner Tully to table the minutes. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor. Item passes unanimously. Item two is consider and take action to approve the agreement with Tyler Technologies with the Eagle, Eagles Fraud Guard. Mary Margaret.
Yes, this, I'll try to get this approved. It is a fraud guard for deed records, and they would sign up for it online, and when anyone files a fraudulent deed, they would be notified. And I think this would be good for the county. It doesn't cost the residents anything to sign up. It's just a service that we would provide for them.
This is a service to help protect for fraudulent...
Deed record filing.
Deed record changes?
Right.
Okay. We have had a few correspondents over the last few months inquiring as to how the county guards against fraudulent deed transactions, where someone, many times they target properties that have little to, that are paid off and are relatively inactive to steal, borrow money against, and there's several different options.
Yeah, sale or whatever they're...
Right.
And right now, there's no way of us knowing if the, if it's a fraudulent deed. If it's signed and notarized, we take it. So there's no way of us knowing if it's fraudulent or not. This would help protect the residents.
And this service is a, like you said, you, they, the residents sign up for it.
Yes.
And that way, they are notified by email if there is some type of action that is tied to them.
So I see that it's from 2008, or an agreement from 2008. Have we done this in the, in the past?
No, that's our deed records, Eagle recording.
Okay.
Yeah, they record all our deed records.
So it's just going to be an extenuation of kind of that agreement in another...
Amendment to the contract.
It's an amendment to the original 2008 contract that put us with Tyler Technologies for the Eagle program.
That is correct.
Will it speak for a year, Mary Margaret? So we'd try this for years, see if it's...
See if, yeah.
And it's extra protection.
Should play far out of record money?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And an increase of six, 6,000?
Yes, well, it's a one-time fee of 4,200, and then it's $1,800 a year, $150 a month.
Gotcha. Okay.
Will they notify the county and the residents, or...
I think it's just the resident that signs up for it. I don't know if they notify me or not.
And will they tell, will y'all tell the people at the front? At the front, or how do they know that we have this?
Well, that's part of their setup. They, they'll help put it on, you know, social media and also in newspapers for us as well. So that way, the county will...
But I'm saying, will we have something, when they come in to file a deed or something, will they be told, hey?
Oh, yes. Mm-hmm, that they did sign up for that, yeah.
Okay.
How long does it take to sign up? Do you have, it's just a matter of minutes, you think?
Just a matter of minutes. I really don't know. They didn't give us anything on how to set it up yet.
Okay. And we've never done anything like this ever before? Do you know of any county that used this other than us?
I know Tarrant County and Colton County, they have something similar to this, but I don't know if it's up Eagle.
Yeah, right.
It is a phenomenon that has, over the last several years, has become an issue.
Yeah, sure.
Especially in the more urban populated areas. My experience with it was a letter that we received about a month ago, month and a half ago, of an individual that owned a second home in Henderson County. And they had become aware of the issue in Tarrant County and began to inquire here as to what our procedures and policy was, is which began Mary Margaret's search on how to address that possible vulnerability.
Right.
Mr. County Attorney?
I look at the agreement from a legal standpoint. I mean, there's not much to it, so it looks fine. From the lens of good idea, bad idea, I have to look, but it's too much hit to it. One, I don't think we've predicted, had a lot of problems with these in our county where they have in some other counties. When we have, it's been more of the Republic of Texas folks, and there are a whole network and system of Republic of Texas folks out there that, they have their own court systems and their own administration of justice, and they'll find police officers for bad traffic stops, and again, it's held in their court that's in MacIntosh County, that's actually around Wetherspoons, some places, one of the court locations that they'll hold for. And they'll take a judgment, and then they proceed to file the judgments in counties. This would also protect against those. Those have actually died out. I think in more recent years, I have heard one of those in four, five, six years. So, you know, I don't know how much it would be utilized at the moment here, but I don't see any downside to doing that.
It's relatively inexpensive for what the security it can bring.
And we will, we will have to develop some procedure or program to tell the people what steps they take, you know, once they're notified, because then the next question too is, once Eagle notifies them and says, hey, somebody's filed a fraudulent deed in your name, obviously, they're going to need to know, okay, what do I do now? Otherwise, they're going to come up to Mary Margaret's office or not know where to go. Eagle's not going to be able to tell them what steps they need to take. I actually haven't sat down and researched that lineage, but from what I understand, and Mary Margaret correct me if I'm wrong, is we'll be able to give whatever instruction or direction we want to Tyler, where they will tell the people, this is who you need to contact to start the steps to have it, have it removed. I know it is a felony in the state of Texas, I know that I thought may have been looked at, it is a felony to file a fraudulent deed, so I'm not sure. To me, the natural steps might be to direct them to law enforcement and the jurisdiction where they are. You know, if they live within a incorporated city, obviously, they'd contact their local city PD. If they live in a county, they could contact the Sheriff's Office on a walk-in deputy, and we could give them that phone number and that information. But I need to look on the civil side of it, too. There may be some steps or remedies that we can take to walk them through to actually remove that filing from the clerk's office. That's something we can do after you guys agree.
How long is this agreement for? Year or...
It's for one year. It's for one year with renewal to follow along annually.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So moved.
We'll need the judge's authorization.
With a judge's authorization to sign.
I second his motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the agreement with Tyler Technologies for the fraud, Eagle Fraud Guard with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number three is consider and take action to accept the resignation of Mark Wade and appoint Robert Barron to the unexpired term for Secretary Treasurer on the Emergency Service District Number Three located in Precinct Four for a term expiring December 31, 2021. Commissioner?
Yes, Mark Wade has served on that board, and he wrote us a letter of resignation that he's moving out of the county to Rockwall. And we really appreciate his service because it's, after he resigned, we've got to, trying to look for people to take his place, and, you know, it's hard to find people to volunteer. Really is. So, and I also appreciate Robert Barron for volunteering to do that, too. So, having said that, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Mark Wade and appoint Robert Barron to the unexpired term of Secretary Treasurer on the Emergency Service District Three located in Precinct Four with the terms expiring December 31, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, seconded by Commissioner McCampl to accept the resignation of Mark Wade and to appoint Robert Barron to fill out the remainder of his term expiring December 31, 2021. Are there any further comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion. All those in favor, sorry. All those in favor. Passes. Sorry. Okay, hey, we did make it. It is now 9:15, so this is item four, which is a public hearing. Having a motion to move into public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to move into public hearing to set a speed limit of 30 miles an hour on the Bushwhacker Drive Road in Bushwhacker Subdivision located in Precinct Two. All those in favor? All right. This is the time for the public to speak. You have three minutes to speak either for or against the setting of a speed limit on Bushwhacker Drive located in the Bushwhacker Subdivision. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? If you would, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
Nancy Quigley, 144 Searls Drive, Maybank, Texas.
Please proceed.
You mean my zip? 75156.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I'm the president of the POA, Bushwhacker POA, and we've had some concerns. We've gotten more children on that road, and they've certainly been concerned about their children playing in the street. You know, that's, that's an issue that parents are always afraid of, having a child get hit. And we, we, it's, it's a straightaway, so sometimes you do tend to go a little too fast. The only concern we have is that we're a little community. We have two little circles. There are 70 people that are members of the POA. We all drive golf carts, and once we put up those speed limit signs, then we have police. So we're concerned about getting out in our golf carts, which are, you know, questionably not streetly legal. We all, and most of us have headlights, we're not out at night anyway, but they're electric, so they don't pollute. That's why we use them instead of driving our cars around, because they don't use gas. But it's a concern. Some people have voiced that concern, so I had to bring it up. The, the speeding is bad, the golf carts are good. I don't know if there's a compromise or not. Basically, those are the concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing that no one else is wishing to speak, I will ask for a motion to close public hearing at 9:18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to close public hearing at 9:18. All those in favor? Item passes. Item five, consider and take action to set a public hearing of 30 miles an hour speed limit on Bushwhacker Drive in the Bushwhacker Subdivision located in Precinct Two. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge. As you just heard, the POA, both for Bushwhacker POA and the Enclave have met, and both presidents have said that they do have a problem with speeding up and down the Bushwhacker Drive. And this really came to effect of some children that were there by the enclave, they were accidentally got out in the road, not accidentally, but they are there and their parents were concerned. And as you can tell, there are other kids that are, have, with school being out and during the COVID, there was more people down here, and so with that concern, they, they approached me about setting a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign on Bushwhacker Drive. I think it's a great thing, and that's why I brought it to court, to protect the, the kids and the citizens in, in that area.
Questions or comments?
Is there a posted speed limit on that road already?
No.
I would like to make one comment. Regardless of if a speed limit is set upon a county road, public road, use of altering vehicles and golf carts are, are limited. If it is posted or not, it is not legal to run golf carts on a public road. There are some ATV, shall we call, variances, you know, given for agricultural use, and I believe they have to be flagged for that. But I do that since we are televised these days over YouTube, that it, to be known, that golf carts are not a legal mode of transportation upon a public roadway. Public service announcement, if it has a speed limit on it or not. So, any other comments?
Judge, I move that we set a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign on Bushwhacker Drive in the Bushwhacker POA located in Precinct Two.
I'll second his motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to approve the setting of a 30 mile an hour speed limit for the Bushwhacker Drive in the Bushwhacker Subdivision located in Precinct Two.
Can you say it three times?
Exactly. All those in favor? Item passes. Item number six, it, another public hearing was scheduled for 9:20. It is now 9:22. We have a motion to enter into public hearing to discuss the setting of a speed limit of 30 miles an hour on County Road 2938 located in Precinct Two. May we have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to open public hearing for the setting of a speed limit of 30 miles an hour on County Road 2938. All those in favor? Item passes. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is the opportunity for the public to speak concerning the setting of a 30 mile an hour speed limit on County Road 2938. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor or against? I will make one last call. Seeing that we have no one wishing to speak at this time for or against, I ask for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to close public hearing at 9:23. All those in favor? Item passes. Item seven, consider and take action to set a 30 mile an hour speed limit on County Road 2938 located in Precinct Two. Commissioner?
So, Judge and, and Court, on County Road 2938, Google uses this road as a cut-through between 175 and Purdus Creek, and wants the former commissioner that fixed the bridge, and we went out and chipped sealed and he fixed the road. Now, there is some heavy traffic that goes through there, and they use it as a cut-through, whether they're coming from Dallas to Purdus Creek or they're leaving Purdus Creek, and there's also some heavy hauling trucks on there. And so, as you can see, in the backup, the Doug Hastings is the one that's kind of started this, and he has some people that have signed this petition to ask for this speed limit to be set. And so I think it's going to be a great thing because there are some, some new houses out there that also have kids, younger kids, that have moved out into the country where they split up some of this property. So it's going to be a good thing because it is a cut-through. They use it as a cut-through road. So I'll entertain any questions?
Questions?
So I have a question.
Okay.
There is a part of County Road 2938 that is on the other side of the highway, but is it labeled 2938 South?
It is. There is 2938 North and 2938 South. 2938 South is commonly referred to as Railroad.
Yes.
Given, given that it lies within the ETJ of Gunbarrow City. They, they have naming rights in their ETJ, but the official designation is County Road 2938 South.
And so does this one need to...
In this particular instance, I believe anyone looking at it would look at the entire roadway, both north and south with this setting.
And that's why I asked the question.
In my opinion, it's not a bad setting for both roads.
I, I agree with that, and that's why I asked the question, is, is, should we, can we go ahead and do this one?
I believe that we can. Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, I'm going to get it.
Okay.
Is there a posted sign now?
No.
There's none?
No.
Any other questions? Judge, I move we set a 30 mile an hour speed limit sign on County Road 2938 located in Precinct Two.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tully, seconded by Commissioner Cheney to set a speed limit of 30 miles an hour on County Road 2938 located in Precinct Two. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thanks, Court.
Thank you. Item number eight, receive financial reports. We have none at this time. Number nine is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. We have none this morning. And item 10 is consider and take action on submitted contracts. We do have one this morning concerning a lease agreement. Mr. County Attorney, would you like to speak to that?
This is in reference to a property for a communications tower?
Right. And I assume all the commissioners have that agreement and have looked at it, but this is for a lease. I know Commissioner McCampl here, they can also speak on it, but it is a ground lease with an individual that's on the east end of the county for one of the locations of a communications tower for our new radio system, communication system. It is a 30-year lease, and so, other than that, anybody have any questions about the contract or the agreement?
Questions for County Attorney?
I saw it here, if they do decide to sell it, do we have the option to buy it?
We do. We put a clause in there that gives us the right of no first refusal in the event that the family wants to sell the location of the tower, where we would have the right to purchase it. It excludes a transfer of ownership to their immediate family or members of their family if they transfer it.
Do we maintain this property after we mow?
Yes, once we put the tower location on the, on the area where the tower would be, we would be, yes, we would do that. Right now, it's used for agricultural purposes, running cattle on it, and so one of the things, even though our lease covers a 500 by 500 foot section, we're not going to fence in a 500 by 500 foot section. We will only fence in the footprint of the tower base, and then you've probably all seen the towers, how they have the guy wires that come down from the tower, and there will be three of those that, again, probably about, just a rough estimate, you know, a 15 by 20 flat that will be also fenced off.
And a building? Small building.
Yeah, and that'll go, the small building will be in the fenced in area.
The fenced in area.
The foot frame. So we'll probably have to end up doing a double fence that we'll be responsible for putting in. We'll have a six-foot chain link, then probably come back and do a barbed wire is what I would recommend, just to keep cows from rummaging up and down your chain link fence and tearing it up.
I've gone by it several times, and it is a good location.
And, and the great thing is that, that they're willing to lock us in for, for 30 years, so, you know, we're planning for the county ahead of us when, when probably all of us will not be here, because these, these expensive towers are getting more and more expensive. And, and the good thing about this is this locks us in for that rate for the next 30 years. And, and it does have a termination or cancellation clause that, that we need to get out of the, the agreement, we can, by providing them notice, because that's the other thing with technology, you know, we say that, we may not be using towers in 30 years, but, but there's no harm if that were to happen, if they become obsolete, then, then we have the ability to, to get out of the agreement.
I'd like to say thank you to the Tidwell family for working with us on this project. This is another piece of the puzzle for our P-25 communication system.
Yes, it is.
That is, is moving forward quickly at this time, and we were very lucky to find this piece of property, which is directly across the street from the old tower that we were on. So I think, I mean, I'd just like to say thank you to them for, for being willing to work with us and, and getting it done in short notice and this quickly. And it's going to move us, move us forward to be hopefully in range of our December, what the company says is be ready to go online in December.
Right.
What we're thinking.
Their community service of doing this for us is worth many times the contract price, and you're exactly right, they need to be thanked at home. We appreciate them. Any other comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to enter into contract with Dana Tidwell for a 500 by 500 area with the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, seconded by Commissioner McCampl to approve the agreement with Dana Tidwell for the lease of a 500 by 500 plot of land for tower use with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor? All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Clint. Item 11, consider and take action on request for right-of-way permits. We have none at this time. Item 12, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. We have none. And item 13 is consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. This morning, I need approval on bills in the amount of $159,298.80.
Commissioner Thomas, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Cheney?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the payment of bills.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cheney, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the fiscal year 2020 bills in the amount of $159,298.80. All those in favor? Item 14, consider and take action on submitted plats.
We have two in Precinct Two, and all of these are paid.
Commissioner?
Judge, this first plat that we have is in the Pinnacle Club, and it's, it's the normal seat of taking two lots into one. And the POA president has, has signed off on it, and all signatures are, are here except the judge's. So, once we approve it.
And what is the?
There'll be a Pinnacle Club Phase One, Section C. And the lot, new lot number will be 90-R. The other ones are Lot 90 and 91, making 90-R.
Okay. Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the final reply to the Pinnacle Club Phase One, Section C of lots 90, 91, turning it into 90-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second his motion, Judge.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Thomas to approve the amendment, the plat amendment, or, excuse me, the replat for filing purposes only in the Pinnacle Club. All those in favor? Item passes. Commissioner?
The next one is in the Pinnacle Club, Phase Two, Section D. These two lots were in two different sections. And so, I told them to go ahead and do the, whichever section they wanted to label it in. So, it's, again, two lots turning into one, Lot 310 and Lot 311, combining them in to making Lot 310-R.
Questions for the commissioner? Entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the replat, Pinnacle Club Phase Two, Section D, Lot 310 and 311, making 310-R for filing purposes only.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the replat in the Pinnacle Club, Phase Two, Section D, creating a Lot 310-R. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 15, open, consider bids. We have none. Do we have the bills? That brings us to item 16, which is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved for motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tulley to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much for being here.